Ladies and gentlemen, those of you that are here, okay. All the meetings are ordered. All rise to the summit, so with the goals, even.
My pleasure, this is two of my United States of America. The Republic for which it stands, one vision under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, we'll race us for the roll calls.
Commission Chair Kerr, here. Commission Vice Chair Belding, here. Commissioner Miola, here. Commissioner Rogers, here. Commissioner Adamson, here. And then Commissioner Newman is excused.
Okay. Okay, well, first up, citizen input on non-agenda items, I see absolutely nobody in the audience attending.
No citizens.
No input, so we'll move along to the approval of the June sixteenth. Meeting minutes, anybody have a chance to read it, any objections, corrections, updates, changes?
I read it, it's fairly true, actually an accurate representation of the meeting.
Fairly true.
Barely.
Fair, yeah, that implies some kind of sort of off, but.
It doesn't have all the words, it doesn't have all of.
Oh, well.
I think it's. It has its synopsis.
Sure, we couldn't put an hour and a half worth of meeting in words, I mean, you're. We've got a stack.
I can, I can be a little verbose at times, I recorded it perfectly well.
Do, do, do I have a motion?
Move that we approve the minutes, back ended.
Yeah, okay, Nicole, you will call.
All right. Commission Chair Kerr.
Aye.
Commission Vice Chair Belding.
Aye.
Commissioner Miola.
Aye.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Adamson.
All right.
Okay, we've minutes approved. It looks like on tonight's agenda, we have a work session. LA for Lafayette twenty twenty five oh one, food. Food trucks and carts. And I assume everybody's had a chance to read your summary packet. Then since this is a work session. It'll basically be us discussing us, uh, my, it looks like the gist of it is. We don't have anything in our development code with regard to this creature animals, so we want to lay the foundation of the groundwork. To have. Stair, food carts, trucks within it. Joe, you prepared a staff report?
Yes, I did, I apologize that it's only one page.
Hey, that's, that's, that's surprise.
You provided you farm it out to somebody to do.
Well, this was my first AI attempt, and I thought it came out pretty good.
Okay.
Just kidding. So, uh. There is a, there are two attachments, one is this listing of eleven cities that have food cart programs or. Mobile food units, I guess is what the Oregon Health Authority calls them, and. So that's determined the Oregon Administrative Rule, consequently, we'll probably call this. Mobile food unit as a permitted use. Rather than food truck or food cart or food whatever, anyway, so this has a summary. General approach definition and details for eleven cities mainly in the Mid Valley area. And then there's this item, the second attachment. And it's eight pages from the Oregon Health Authority. And I didn't put it in for you to, you know, start looking at every line and every detail, but mainly I included it to show you. What a food. A mobile food operator needs to do and go through. To start operating. And so basically, there are these Oregon Health Authority regulations, and these are, this is just a checklist kind of a thing, not even the actual regulations. But it's something for the operator to be able to go through and check, make sure they've done everything or they have everything. And for the health items, they would get a. Whatever, review and approval from the Yamhill County Health Office. And then from the city, they would get what would be like a temporary use permit or some kind of a permit. To operate wherever, on whichever property they're. They have a contract with or an agreement with the property owner. And we would review what they're going to do in terms of our zoning regulations. So despite how much is in this eight page item. It doesn't have anything about local zoning other than maybe just a box to check that make sure you comply with the local zoning regulations.
It, it, I read through it or scanned through it, it just reads like, hey, depending upon. Here's what the state requirements are, you got more levels that you can apply to, each of them has their own increasingly stringent requirements, so hey. This satisfies, call it, call it the OHA works at satisfying state requirements for. The mobile food unit, after that. It goes to the local, and that's where we come into play tonight.
So anyway, like I say, I'm not going to go through the. Eight pages of OHA stuff, but the, the purpose was just to let you see what a. Mobile food unit operator has to be aware of and go through and kind of convinces me that. Later in my retirement, I don't think I want to be a mobile food operator. So.
Okay.
What, what precipitated the, now that we're studying it, has there been movement among. Operators to come into Lafayette and that so how many?
Yeah, yeah, the city has received a couple of inquiries in the last year or two about locating MFU in the city.
Okay.
And our LCDO does not address MFUs, and they are not listed as a use in any zoning district. So. All Brandon can say to people is, well, you're not permitted anywhere, and if we were to try to figure out some way to let you operate. Then it would be a. Odd unofficial sort of thing. Uh, the code does have a section called temporary uses, and you'd think it would have several temporary uses listed like Christmas tree sales. Or fireworks sale, something like that. That's, you know, going to be in the city temporarily, and then they go away and come back the next year. But it turns out that section is only about this long. And it's about allowing on a temporary basis, someone to come and drive their RV onto a property. And stay there for. Up to two weeks or some short period to help take care of someone who is in the house that needs taking care of. Maybe it's not two weeks, it might be two months or something, but anyway.
Short time, limited time.
Yeah, typically that's not called a temporary use, it's like a hardship. Situation where due to this hardship being experienced by the person that lives there. If they could just have someone, a friend, relative, whatever, come and stay and then be there to. Do the usual caregiver things rather than hiring a person or a company that would have. People come to the house. So anyway. Uh. Background, on the first, well, the one and only page. And the middle sentence there in the background section says among the eleven cities, the attached matrix shows the standards range from. A few standards to many standards, the size of the many cities. Supports only one, no, the size of many cities supports only one to three. Units in a city. And then there's also attached is the MFU review packet. So if you're a real small city like, I don't know, St. Paul, that's got four hundred and fifty people. Or used to have, now they've only got four hundred and twenty. They might support one unit. And if someone said, oh, I want to on my property, I'll sign contracts with six. And it's to come in and be there, then those five of those six would probably not stay very long and they'd go somewhere else. So a city of forty seven, forty eight hundred. That does not have a lot of other restaurants in town. I don't know how many food carts might be supported by the population here. But depending on what they are, you know, the. The whatever type of food. Uh, that's one thing that we kind of need to have in mind here, because one of the issues will be. How many food carts will the city allow on a given property? And so, one, yeah, sure, give them a chance, and if they can. Feed forty seven hundred people, they'll be millionaires and gone in a year. Or if you have two or three, then. I don't know if they would be able to make it. But certainly it depends on the type of food and how many hours a day and how many days a week they're open. So. Those are just some of the basic things to think about. Other basic things are the properties where they're going to locate, they need to have the owner's approval. And that would be part of the application material that they turn in. Uh, and, and issue would be what's there on the property now? If it's just a dirt lot, well, that's probably not going to work well. Whenever there's rain, and even if it's a shower in the summer, you don't want a dirt lot, you want something that's paved. Some kind of surface. And if you're a customer, you don't want to get out of your car, walk over to the truck and have to put on galoshes or rubber boots or something. And so usually the surfaces are required to be paved. So that is one of the issues that can cause a lot of vacant properties in a commercial zone to not be eligible. But. There's also some, particularly here, uh, prior used car lots that were paved. And during COVID, the car lots went away, and because they were in a C one zone, they were nonconforming. And because they went away for more than twelve months, they cannot come back and reintroduce the use that isn't permitted in that zone. So there could easily be a couple places that have pavement. And nothing there, or pavement and some kind of a little office like so many used car lots have. And that could be a location for the owner today to rent space to whatever number of units. Uh, another thing is the time limit, but. If it's, if it is a successful unit or two or three, then you really don't want them to go away. And on the other hand, they may say, well, yeah, we're going to go away in November, December and January, but we'll be back. And so if you say, okay, we'll tie our time limit to that situation. Sure enough, somebody's going to say, well, I'm going to stay till the end of November, you know, through the holiday or the Thanksgiving holiday. Oh, okay, well, if your time limit doesn't allow that, then it's a time limit problem. How do you know what the right time limit is? So, and then some units, if they stay all year, then they're there all year, so you wouldn't want a time limit. And if you have hours, how many hours a day? Do you want it to open up at six or seven or eight? Do you want it to stay open till eight or nine or ten or eleven or whatever? Then that's another issue to have in mind to think about. Uh, some detailed things that can negatively affect abutting properties. Are some of these units, well, if I understand it, all of the units that are made now have to have an onboard generator. But a lot of the older units didn't, don't have. The onboard generator, but they had a generator that they unloaded and put outside and started it up and plugged everything in, and. That's what they did, and so the generator would be making noise. All the time they were operating and depending on whose zoning property next to. Or it's in the evening and it's quiet, then even a. Generator that doesn't make a lot of noise can be heard around in a neighborhood. And I'm not thinking of a neighborhood, you know, where it's all housing. Because presumably, another thing that you would decide is to allow. Units only in the C one and C two districts. Another district that allows some commercial uses is RC, it's the dark brown. And so that would be possibly another zone to allow units in. But the dark brown RC zone allows residences as a permitted outright use, as well as some commercial uses as permitted outright. So if you allow food units in the other three zones, then they could be on a property that has some sort of business and. It's a paved parking lot, and the unit goes in and their generator is running and right next door is a single family dwelling. So. A lot of things to think about. Uh, another is access. Hopefully the property would have a regular real access off of a street and because it's third going through town. And that's where all the C one and even the C two property has an access on the third. Then hopefully whatever driveway or curb cut that's there. Is sufficient to have a bunch of cars driving in and out every day and not creating a problem. Not stringing gravel on the third street, not stringing mud or anything in the wet season, so. Uh. I guess, just those are some of the things that I wrote down real quick, they're the basics. Uh, and so again, you don't need to worry about. The unit itself, it's regulated at the state level and inspected at the county level. So. With that, the staff recommendation is staff recommends the commissioners review the matrix, recollect their personal experience at MFUs. I assume all of you have eaten at a food unit. And discuss the standards that would be appropriate for Lafayette. And the discussion would provide direction to staff to return on October sixteen with proposed language. To amend the. Lafayette zoning and development ordinance to allow. MFUs. Depending, uh, and it's. When I wrote this, I was thinking, hoping that I could. For this thirty five day notice that goes to DLCD whenever you're going to amend your comp plan or you're implementing regulations. Uh, because this is the eighteenth and the sixteenth is even a couple days sooner in October than the eighteenth is in September. The thirty fifth day comes up pretty quick, so it's going to definitely be before your meeting in October, and so. I could put in a bunch of standards knowing that the system. Understands whatever is entered in on the thirty fifth day isn't necessarily what's going to be. Reviewed by the planning commission because things can change during this process. And after the commission meets, your recommendation to the council could say, yep, the things that we saw in the staff report to us, we changed three of them, we deleted two, we added two new brand new ones. And so.
So you're thinking, you're thinking, you're thinking of creating kind of a, call it a verbose boilerplate. Pick and choose. That we will then be able to say, okay, we're, I mean, these two.
What I would submit would at least get us in for the thirty five day notice period. And because there's no. Goal that directly addresses food carts. Then there's probably nobody in the state that's going to care really what we do, we probably will have, like is often the case, no one testify at your public hearing. Although if the word gets out or when the word gets out, some local food truck person. Might want to come and say, yep, you know, do this, do that, don't do this, don't do that. So that frankly would be a good idea, and. I don't know how often. Then Brandon gets people calling up, asking about food carts, but we had two or three in a couple of year period, maybe it was only eighteen months. So while we're in our process, if somebody contacts him, he can say, oh, well, great, you can. Talk to the planning commission on October sixteen or to the city council on whatever the second. Thursday, they meet on Thursday, yeah, the second Thursday in November is. But. It's. Anyway.
Okay, uh. Since we want to start to pre-work on the boilerplate, I had a few notes that I jotted down after I read through this, because I did read through the eleven examples, they were interesting. Like I stated at the beginning of the meeting, it sounds like all we're trying to do is create language that creates the framework. For MFUs to be in Lafayette, if I go by some of the examples that were presented, it looks like we have. Two possible situations, one where you have, I'll call it standalone. Whether it's a trailer or self-propelled, it's a single entity comes in. Plops itself from where that's where it operates, then you have the other entity that's a pod. Small area prepared to hold. Some number of food carts, it could be, let's just say, anywhere from. Two to ten depending upon size, but it's, but it's specifically meant to hold. A couple and serve within a concentrated area, I know if you go in on ninety nine in McMinnville, it looks like there's a place. Uh, used to be an auto repair facility, I think it was Dave's Auto Repair. That location is being prepped and they're going to be set up to have food carts. Uh, if you ever go into Salem on two twenty one out of Dayton, uh, turns into Wallace Road. Just as you get into Salem a little ways, you will find on your right side, you find, go through a brief residential area, then you hit. Some apartments and right there, large structure, retail, but there are probably ten food carts all lined up, so that would represent a pot.
And this is, this is a new one that just popped up in, in Beaverton.
Okay.
Passing around, it's a. Wood Lane, yeah.
So.
And it's got.
A monitor, like.
Yeah. Pods, they have that more permanent seating, you know, like now, you know, it's there. It's, it's meant from what I was reading here, the pods are meant to be a more criminal, this type of basis, whereas what it had is, you know, where, you know, periodically, and you might have. Two or three that come in, um, they're there for thirty days, forty five days, then you might have, you know, they'll move on to another place while I have another one coming.
It's so sensitive, yeah. My thing, you know, note in the staff report, the paragraph that says an associated use of land in MFU pods is not included in the amendment.
Yeah.
So.
We're not talking about pods here, we're talking about.
Yeah. Officially, we're not talking about pods, but pods popped up, so I thought I'd don't get derailed about.
Well, but couldn't, but couldn't we include language on pods?
Well, if you want to.
Be prepared for, I think in being prepared for the future.
If you want to double the effort and the time involved, because a pod is like a permanent development that would go through site development review. It has public water, the public sewer, underground power, storm drainings.
Okay, then.
It has all of that stuff, and you'd have to have standards for all of that. Let, we can't copy somebody else's.
This, this one in Beaverton was a, was a, a used car site, and they, they preserved the building. That the, uh. That was the, the office space.
But that's could be considered a pod, though. And I would say that's a place.
It's a pod, it's got eighteen. It's got eighteen food trucks. So I think if, if any of the towns that are similar to us, and even Newburgh, McMinnville, it's one going in McMinnville, a pod, or is that a? Food truck space?
It looks like, based on what we were describing, it looks like a pod, because I did read an article on it, the old, the, the business that was repaired, but it used to be an old gas station. It's being preserved and will be used for inside seating, et cetera, and then where the. Outside was, you've got the awning for the gas pumps where they used to be years ago, because they were moved, but the area around there is being set up, there is a cut. Going in the driveway, and that's where somebody could, I don't know how many will support, I think at least four. But it's set up so that those vehicles can be, trucks can be stationed in there, and.
I think it's got as many as six.
Yeah, it's some, but there's some, yeah, there's some number there. Plus the old structure, and they preserved the old structure, they kept some of the signage and details to preserve the history.
So you're, what, what I think we need to think about is that these are cities that are twenty five, thirty five, fifteen, hundred thousand people. Um, are any of the smaller cities, I don't think they're looked at the pot, so, you know, maybe we grow large enough for that. Later, but I think right now, just concentrate.
Yeah, no, I wanted, I wanted to throw the idea out there, yeah, okay, because.
Yeah, it'll be a good kind of a test, so that if we get one that comes in and they stay, then maybe a second.
Successful and.
Depending on if you allow, say, two or three on one property, then if one's there doing great, then another one comes. And then potentially a third one comes, and if they're all there still doing great. Then that might be an indication that we should kind of be thinking about amending the code to allow. A pod.
Okay.
And who knows, that site might be the pod.
Could be, yeah.
Could be somewhere else, because.
So the.
A developer of a pod is like, is a real developer. And some specialize in that.
Yeah.
And, you know, they'll do a pod in Happy Valley, and then they'll do a pod, you know, thirty miles away in McMinnville or someplace.
Of all of them.
I'm, the only concern part that I've got is, is, is McMinnville, basically. They, they, they don't have any rules. And they're, and they're, and they're facing it now, and they've got. Well, they've got quite a mixture of, of. Uh, standalone that are all over the place.
So for, so for standalone, my, I, I just jotted a few notes down here, so I'll throw them out there, they can be part of the consideration mix. Uh, my thought, one was thought was. Trailer. Because some of the examples say trailers are okay, some of them say self-propelled are okay, others say self-propelled are not okay, I think for us. I would say trailer or self-propelled should be okay. Maybe we want to address some kind of maximum sizing of the vehicle that comes in. You know, whether it's a sixteen foot truck or a nineteen foot truck or something like, something like that, the question there is what makes most sense for a. For a food cart operator, whether it's a trailer or a truck, what makes the most sense? Is sixteen foot appropriate, is nineteen foot, is twenty one, is somewhere in there, there's going to be something that's. Shall we say, home and on the market, people use to convert to these MFUs. Uh. My thought, sewer water, electrical, they're all supposed to be self-contained to some extent, is driven by OHA. That doesn't mean that, again, depending upon the owner of the property and what agreements, whatever is reached, that something like that could not be. Or might not be made available, so in some way maybe we want to address that if it's available here was what the requirements would be. Uh. With regard to the issue of. Shall we say. A permit to operate, my thought was. Again, given that it's a food cart, it's mobile, and they might only want to run for a six month term, say in the summer, they might want to come in at various. Limited intervals during year long, a week, a month at a time, maybe it's something where you have a permit that's issued, it's good for a six month term. And it is, can be automatically requested with nothing more than a request, so that. It's issued, it's good for six months. If it expires, you'll be asked to vacate, but if you're interested in working, if you don't ask to. And you decide to vacate, that's fine, but if you decide you want to stay for all year long, end of that six months. You something, make a written request to the city, it'll be automatically renewed.
So with that, when this is thinking ending, okay, you've got. So with that, when this is thinking, okay, you've got two or three or whatever it might be. And you get to that point, you know, the the permit, six months, whatever's expired, what if you have a waiting list of people that would like to come in? Does that person, do they automatically lose that spot or?
No, 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 they would, they would, they would simply make the request by permit. We would have to figure out. What locations, okay, based upon what we've got right now in Lafayette. How many food carts in various places could be cited Lafayette? Maybe we have a situation where, okay, and I'll just make numbers that go down your path, let's say we determine that we can support. Eight food carts within the city, based upon location, not demand, but location. So you have eight permits. Those permits could be issued, it would be good for six months, the person that's cited there would get preferential. They simply request to extend it, they can. If they turn and they, let's say they decide they're going to vacate, then they turn that permit back into the city and we might have to. Again, let's assume the demand is there, might have, okay, they they turn that back into the city. They would, they would know when they turn it back in, that if the demand is there. It would be based upon, we could either make it first kind of person of waiting list. Or we could make it based upon, okay, when, when that permit is available, we're going to make it by. Raffle drawing. Throw all the names of every entity that's interested in occupying that one spot into a hat, okay, somebody pick out a name. That's the person that will get that permit for that site, something like, not perfectly fair. But at least a degree of, hey.
Everybody might have a chance.
Everybody is gonna have some degree of chance operated, only person that would have the benefit would be. The person that's already there, assuming they wanna stay and continue, yes.
Well, there's another thing you can look at is why is the city determining who gets to get in the pool? Why not the land, the landowner be able to do that, it's their, their property, for the most part, it's their business. The city could just then regulate the permits, let the, if the person that owns the land wants one food truck there forever. I don't think we should leave that out of the discussion.
Okay, I can see.
They should, they should be able to write the lease to the property.
They get there, they would be the ones write the lease, okay, I can see that.
Subject to a, subject to us issuing permits.
City would have no reason to have a city employee, I mean, there's. When you look at the size of the city and the number of employees at City Hall, you're way understaffed. Every small city. Um, but my other cities is thirteen hundred people and they have three people at City Hall.
So some permitting possible city, take into account landlord of the leasehold.
So, so we had, so we've had inquiries into food trucks coming in. Have we had landowner, landowners. Contact the city on availability of their property for putting a food truck.
Yes, I believe there's been one so far, so we have landowner and.
The way the private sector works is sometimes, you can say inefficient, because in some cases. A food op, uh food truck operator would call the city not having a clue if any property in town is available. And then on the other hand, you might have a property owner call up and say, you know, what's the deal with food trucks? Can I do that on my property? Yes, you can, and then they say, well, how in the heck do I get hold of a food truck?
Yeah, yeah.
And if I get one, is this gonna be a good one or is the food gonna make everybody sick and all that kinda stuff? So we, the the city will let the private sector do its thing as best as it can.
We'll just set the regulations that. Yeah.
For very single food truck. Type of a, of a situation, I think they got their act.
For which one?
Yeah, Kaiser, they've got one place uh that. Uh there's a business, a coffee kiosk, another business building, and on the back side of the property. And it's all paved parking, on the backside of the property, there's four units that have been there for, I don't know, half a dozen years.
So maybe, sounds like what you're getting at, uh Scott, is that Kaiser might serve as, maybe not exactly what we do. But gets, gets, gives us a much closer starting point to go from.
Of of all of the ones that, that Jim, you and your team put together a a really good. Listing and description, it was very helpful. But of all of them, I I I I find the information on Kaiser to. To probably be the the basis that you work with us to pursue, we can give them their regulations and you can review those.
My other thought was, like Jim was mentioning, zoning, I would agree, I would, I would think that. And then C one, C two, or R C, I would consider that where it should be in, you know, an outright use.
I I think what what Jim pointed out about the R C's zone, I think. Would it would be okay with caveat that they wouldn't have a remote generator.
Contained.
I'd have, I'd have hooked to a power source.
Well, it's more than that, if you're gonna have a food truck right next to a single-family dwelling and they're out in their backyard in the summertime. And they're having to smell the food. Um, you know. It's one of the things where I think you should be careful and so that people. At their residence can have quiet enjoyment of their residence and not be negatively affected. By a use that the city has never allowed, and all of a sudden it's coming into town. And as someone would say, stinking up my neighborhood.
Right, and and.
Even though the neighbor across the street might say, well, I don't know, it's a Hawaiian kinda thing, I like the smell of pineapple.
And my, and my counterpoint to, my counterpoint to that would be, yes. You are, it's a, it's a mixed-use residential commercial. But key point is, yes, you moved into the residential part of it. But because it's our city, it can be developed into a business. And I would say. We as a city should be looking to both help our residential. Occupants, but also our business occupants simultaneously, and I would say if somebody lives in our C zone. They need, they they are forewarned just by being in a commercial zone and at some future point. They might have a business locate next to them, but does something that's. A little less than residential, it's like someone who lives in the city and moves out to the country and starts complaining about farmers kicking up dust. It's like, no, you moved into the country? Too bad, so sad.
I take your lumps. Run into somebody like.
You know, so I would, I would.
Because the units have not been allowed in the city.
Well, just because they have. Yes.
You are potentially creating a problem. And if they're in the commercial zone, C one and C two, then that is a better. Safe place for them to be.
Okay.
Than for the city to say, oh yeah, besides, you can go into R C and then create problems for the resident. Create problems for the new business and it just, it's a losing, it's a loser to put. A business that can negatively affect a resident. I would do use and say, go to it, resident.
Again, I would, I would, I would, I would say that, well, you are absolutely right, it could ruffle feathers from the residential standpoint. Because it's, it is there from a commercial standpoint and zoned part commercial use. For that very purpose, to sit down and say, oh, we're going to go only. I don't believe in safety, I don't believe in going the same path in this particular case. So from my perspective, I would say. Outright allowed use, even though it's a change for our city, there could be other changes that'll come along in the future. I would say C one, C two, R C outright use. I would even go down the path and I don't know that it could ever exist. But I could even sit down and say, okay. Even in a residential zone. You take a residential zone where you have a couple of hundred houses parked in. And somewhere within that, there is a vacant lot. That maybe has, the owner hasn't developed and he wants to put in and he is interested in putting in. We'll call it a residential bistro.
I think you would have problems with that.
No, no, I I am not saying, I'm not saying, I'm I'm saying that we might have problems today, but I'm thinking. For me, would I rather? Depending upon where I live and what I do, would I rather walk? A mile and a half to go grab a coffee, cup of coffee, it's a nice sunny day like today, no big deal. If it's pouring down rain, eh, maybe not, but if that place is three blocks away and around the corner. And I can go pick up a mocha or something like that.
You're talking about.
I'm talking subjectively.
I'm talking subjectively, yeah.
But also think about what if that coffee place was right next door to your house and you're sitting in your house and fifteen people are coming trying to get coffee.
Cars are coming up, and they're coming by.
Even on your driveway.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think, I think if if we, if we did open it into the residential commercial zone. I I I I I believe it would be prudent to at least. Allow the opportunity to query the people around that that site.
So you're opening.
Ask for their inputs, ask for their agreement or approval.
Are restaurants allowed in R C?
We have a restaurant, we got the the red table.
Yeah, right, red, red tail espresso is in an R C zone.
Yeah, it's right here down first, right across the road, right there.
Just before the road.
Was it allowed though? I mean, yeah, it could have been. A non-conforming prevented.
The R C zone was created. And you'll notice where it is, it's the dark brown, not a lot of it. And it was an effort to zone properties that had houses. Put them in its, as, well, they'll be back up as part of the, I don't know what, thirty, thirty-five years ago. I'm not sure what the zoning was along Third, but given the number of houses that are even still there on Third. I'm thinking it was some kind of a residential zone. And then at some point, the city said, yeah, we've got a few businesses in this kinda central part. Let's create a C one zone that's like a central business district and emphasize that it's going. That's our future downtown, so to speak. And so the houses that were in the C one and C two, there was hardly any C two. So the houses that were in the C one, they were made to be non-conforming. Because C one and C two do not, do not allow single-family dwellings. But for those that houses that are a block away on Second, south of Second. And then the dark brown that's running out to the east side, I mean, that used to be almost out of town. Because you had to go over that Martin Creek topography dip. And so it was easy for the city to say, well, let's put some R C out there and that way if. Property owners wanna put a business out there, they can, or for those people who are already out there in houses. They will be in a zone that allows housing, they won't be non-conforming. So down by Commons Park, those dark brown blocks that go. What, three, four blocks over to Madison Street. All of those houses are in an R C zone that allows them as a permitted outright use. And that protects them, they don't have to worry about some business coming in right next to them. Uh to get a lot of that kinda zoning in small cities, particularly here in the valley. Because the local small city government wants to have a downtown, wants to, you know, support business and. Usually there's one or two or three or four older businesses or buildings, Dallas remodels are cute. People would love to go in there to eat dinner if it was a restaurant, we've got that, um. There's no restaurant in the building now, right there at the corner of Jefferson and Third.
Used to be Hemmer's.
Yeah, whatever the names used to be, but um. For the people that are living in a house on Third Street or ninety-seven, or pardon me, ninety-nine. Going through Amity and any of the other cities that. Ninety-nine West goes through or ninety-nine E or eighteen or any of the main highways. There's a lot of single-family dwellings that are there and it's like, oh my gosh, the city's owned this whole strip commercial. Oh my God, am I gonna have to have a Dollar General move in on the property next to me? Well, okay, yeah, you are, cause you're in C one and you have no protection, you yourself are a non-conforming use. And so city said, well, yeah, we're gonna stand firm on the C one, on the main drag through town. We've got to have something that is a commercial zone and then a block away or two blocks, whatever would fit the community. We'll have this mixed residential commercial zone and generally they don't work very well. Cause those that are south of Second. Because the demand, particularly in these last few years, has been for residential. And not yet for commercial in a city of forty-eight hundred people now. Anyway, uh, all those blocks have, not all, but there's a few new houses. And those houses aren't likely to go away for another hundred years. And so whatever the city has zoned in C one and two, that's probably all the commercial zone land you're gonna have. For a long time unless somebody that's in the R C zone comes to the city and says, I own a whole block. I wanna be C one or C two, then the city could rezone it. And provide more land for more new commercial uses, but as long as the demand right now is for housing. Property owners are gonna say, yeah, okay, I'm selling and whoever buys it, yep, they're gonna build a house. And that house will be there for a long time with no possibility of the city expanding its commercial area. In that direction.
I like what you said, Jim, about they're trying to make the commercial district, the downtown more compact. So you got people walking around, seeing other businesses that you're eating your shawarma and you walk by a coffee place and, okay, the coffee. You go, oh, there's a jewelry spot, that does make sense why you you think C one on two would make the most sense. Um. The other thing you look at in the R C is if you're gonna be having a food trucks available. Um, there's already traffic issue on ninety-nine specifically and some other streets. Will that cause a bigger backup than there? There should be, another, I I kinda go along of not allowing it in R C. That's what I'm saying.
We're actually. Here, you know.
Yeah. Not so much, but if you allow it down there, you have to allow it over there. You can't pick and choose your R C.
Oh, no, that's true. But they might not, they might not want to locate, they might not want to locate out just because of ninety.
There's, there's a turn to that Dollar General, you're not blacking out ninety-nine.
There's, there's commercial property along here.
Right, and.
Along ninety-nine, don't use it.
Right, dark brown strip from basically Martin Creek east to the city limits.
And I've never seen a backup entering in one of those businesses, cause the Dollar General has the turnoff. I think that was designed for the the park right above it, but.
Right.
They they, that's where their driveway is, is off that side street, not off ninety-nine. While the other R Cs on ninety-nine there, their driveway would be off of Highway ninety-nine. So somebody can a left-hand turn, go in towards Portland into one of those. That could back up for a while.
Yeah, well, luckily there's a middle turn lane there.
All the way through?
I think it's a middle turn lane, they're gonna go into Pioneer Village, local home park.
That's just that one turn, I think.
Right, but the middle lane extends back to Martin Creek. Martin Creek to a two-lane. Going, there's a bridge that goes over Martin Creek and that's a two-lane road for ninety-nine.
Probably more likely that we're gonna be looking, if 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 they're gonna bang in a food truck or do that kind of thing, it's probably gonna be down. or do that kind of thing, it's probably gonna be down along ninety-nine W for the traffic.
Maybe you're better.
Better sit down here. Versus where?
Versus.
Or second. So you're just thinking the RC zone.
Yeah.
But if we make it, if we make it allowable for the RC zone. It's it's not gonna be up to us to decide where in the.
What spot, exactly. Well, and then.
Unless we, unless there's, unless there's a qualifier put in there that is subject to the to the agreement and review of the, but with an odd repeat of them.
Well, and given that we don't know what the market response will be. And given how many places there are on Third. Then if it's going to put, if there's a reasonable potential to create conflicting uses right next to one another by allowing food trucks in the RC zone, why do that now?
Another thing is, there's a lot of empty businesses in the commercial districts. If you want to boost that up, you focus all your food trucks in that commercials and you want to see two.
That's what I'm thinking. That if you want that, you you want that critical mass where you're gonna get.
And that doesn't mean later on, I don't believe that means later on, you can't include RC later. Because this is more of an experiment than anything else. We're not talking pause.
Yeah.
Talking about a few food trucks.
To get a way to to expand, to expand our commercial zone, to expand our commercial district over the the next decade or so. It is going to happen to be an evolution of the RC zone from RC to to commercial.
Yeah, but if they're not filling out the commercial right now.
It 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 is, it was before, it's gone vacant now. And we 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 get traffic fixed along ninety-nine W. And we can get it back, it's possible. But it's, it's a, it's a guess at best. But there is no, there is no growth of the commercial district. None whatsoever. We can't, we have no place to grow commercial. Except through through residential commercial that is, that evolves into commercial space. And and honestly, the the area along, uh, along Madison.
Yeah.
Uh, probably has the, and this this area down here on on ninety-nine West. There's, there's some big homes there. They're not going anywhere. They're not gonna go away. And I don't know that there's any vacant land between Dollar General and Big Monster House that sits.
So at the corner of Jackson and Third, on the east side of Jackson, there's a big old house. And then there's the, uh, Martin Creek. Topographic feature, for lack of a better term. And then once you're on the east side of Martin Creek, uh, every lot has either a house or a business.
Yeah.
And interestingly, the businesses that are there are not big traffic generators and they're not noisy.
Yeah, there's the, the women's clinic there. There's a, there's a, uh.
Paint shop.
Paint shop.
Paint, yeah. Preschool or something.
But I, they could, they could request being converted from RC to to commercial. But it it's, it's really to grow a commercial district bigger than than the the two-block wide, six-block long area we've got.
But is a food truck the way you want or the city wants to grow?
Yeah, yeah, and and I'm only positing it as a, as a, as a possibility of a state, but a growth step to go from a residential RC and an acceptable zone where where people accept that food truck in their neighborhood. And we see it, it would be an evolution to go into into other kinds of commercial. Maybe a, maybe a restaurant would take its place. It's just a, it's just a method and a, and a means of 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 the, uh, the zoning evolution of of the system.
It's not an answer. It's just a step.
Yes. And and.
And we're just a potential to have a step.
I I think if if the, if the qualifications are put there, that they, that you have to get approval of people within a hundred feet of that lot. You get, you get a couple of people in there that that will.
Are you thinking that a hundred, a hundred, what is to get it permit? Is that what it's?
To to permit the.
That's the point, though. If you allow food trucks in the RC zone. Then you say, okay, to kind of protect the residents that are in the RC zone. We will have, uh, I don't know if you, what, if you meant what you said, but approval of the surrounding property owners.
Right, whether within a hundred feet.
So, yeah, so but even at that point, you're putting those property owners through a process. And some are gonna say, yep, I don't mind it. And others are gonna say, I do mind it. I'm right next to it. And then you're pitting neighbor against neighbor. For a use that's never been allowed there. But the city would allow it and create these possible situations that nobody's gonna be happy with. And particularly the city council or even you folks wouldn't want to have neighbors who used to be friends coming and testifying saying, yeah, we used to be good buddies, but now this thing that's proposed in our neighborhood has, you know, created a lot of trouble, strife. So rather than taking that step to allow food trucks in the RC zone. Now, why don't we wait and see? It may be that food trucks will never catch on into, in Lafayette. Or it might be that once the code is changed, the C one and C two districts, the property owners there are gonna go out and look for food trucks, contact them and say, hey, how'd you like to come to Lafayette? There's no food trucks there. You'd be all by yourself. And then four or five property owners would get two or three on each of their properties and there'd be a total of ten in town and they'd all be looking at each other saying, where did all this competition come from?
Right, they're not, the, the, the. The popularity of the food truck exists. And Angries was up up by the rock shop. They ended up making enough money out of that, out of that their unit right next to the rock shop that still sits there.
Mm-hmm, and where is this?
Then Angries, the rock shop, up ninety-nine, up, uh, almost.
No, out there, yeah.
Yeah, not in any city.
No.
Yeah.
Right next to the island, yeah.
I mean. So they, they made enough money in that, off of ninety-nine W, that, and that rock shop to take over. What's it?
Tommy's.
Tommy's.
In McMenville.
In McMenville, yeah. That they're doing quite well.
I think what John said about, uh, just letting it in the commercial areas to start tracking critical mass makes the most sense to me, just because we have so much non-used commercial zone right now. It it makes sense to try and focus our efforts. Like, if you're saying that we want to grow our commercial area, but before we grow our commercial area, we gotta fill up what we already have. And and, you know, I don't know what our commercial occupancy right now is, but I feel like we're not even half using the commercial zoned area for commercial property. Um, because there's vacant buildings and there are houses in that.
Seems compared to Dundee and Carleton.
Yeah.
Um. There's just not hardly any participation here in the North Amhill County Wine Country Economy.
But I feel like, you know.
I don't know why that is, but it often goes to whoever the property owners are. If they're not willing to sell, then whoever's coming in as the agent of change to start up something that is related to the wine country economy, then nothing will ever happen. It's the property owners that decide what to do with their property and more importantly, when they're gonna do something.
With food trucks, though, I mean, I saw on some of these regulations in these other cities, they, uh, prohibited drive-through food carts, right? And so when you do that, you are forcing people to get out of their car and onto their feet. And that makes them significantly more likely to go to the business next door as well. Um, you know, so I think that it makes a lot of sense to focus on just the commercial zoning for now. Try and get some food carts in to generate foot traffic, which will hopefully boost the other businesses.
Yeah, I I agree. I, you know, eliminate it right down to the commercial zone, um. It would need me, we can expand it later on, but, you know, it'd be a start and, uh, and they would write, you know, you get people out of their, their cars, foot traffic, you know, they, you know, if it's right off Third or right on Third, whatever it might be, um, that would be a good start. And I I like, um, what was it? Kaiser, when you brought up Kaiser, you know, it's, it's a simple, very straightforward, um, model uh, that we could use, uh, to to model our city after, uh, in regards to that.
And adjust or tweak it.
And we get.
Uh, Kim, could we get a copy of their, their regulations, their code?
Yeah, I might comment that. Texas is kind of a weird place and having lived there for over forty years and being a land use planner, being in a city with no downtown and just a commercial strip that's three miles long is interesting. I mean, there's just a couple of two-story buildings in that three-mile stretch. And anyway, it's interesting to see how the free-market enterprise system has made choices about land at various places and what to do with it. And there's certainly a lot of, you know, one-story fast food joints, although Sonic couldn't make it there.
Really?
It's gonna become a Burger King, I guess.
Probably because In-N-Out down the, the road.
Well, yeah, In-N-Out's out there by the freeway.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyway, uh. But Kaiser has some what I think are, and I was on the planning commission for nine years, about, I don't know, about fifteen years ago. And they have some good standards for subdivisions and partitions and infill. And, uh, commercial standards for, you know, new commercial buildings and things like that. But when it comes to some of their temporary uses or things like the food carts. They are just bare bones. And I don't know if, you know, what kind of problems they have. I don't know how the four food court, their food carts next to, it's Copper Creek is the main retailer that's at that property. And then there's a, a coffee kiosk. And so I don't know if they move out and dump their waste once a week or what they do with it. But they're there because we go to Copper Creek and buy bird food and those food units are always there and it seems to be the same four ones. But I rarely, when I'm there anyway, I rarely see anybody buying any food at them. So it's like, I don't, I don't know what's going on, but they're there and maybe the property owner lets him be there for fifty bucks a month just to have one more thing on the property to have people coming and going. Uh, other than Copper Creek, there's the food, there's the coffee kiosk and then another building. I don't even know what's in there. But, uh, it might be that that property owner makes enough from the other uses that are paying lease leases to have those four food trucks there for virtually nothing. So they can, they don't have to make, you know, ten thousand a month out of their truck to afford the lease rate.
I I think the port of party planning people, I've seen the, the ones that come to, to, uh, a hearth, a third to, to take care of the, the port of, as I've seen them. Go, go to the kiosks at, uh, in, in McMenville. Presumably to drain their tanks.
Yeah, so anyway.
Be the only way you could do is pump it out.
Yeah, and you're going to allow one or two or potentially even three. Uh. I wouldn't worry about bathrooms. Just make it so that people are coming and getting their food and either going away right away. Or if they stay there and eat it, they don't dilly-dally to the point where they're looking for a bathroom before their bladder busts.
So even though Kaiser's a weird downtown, like you're saying, I still like the language they have.
Mm-hmm. And we'll just be aware, it's a bare-bones thing. And once you get folks in under the current, under whatever the regulations are. When they stay, then if you adopt new regulations, it'll be tough to make them fly.
You see.
And we'll have the basics in terms of, you know, a trash basket and that kind of stuff. But, uh, you just wanna be careful that your bare-bones regulations don't create problems. And you have an operator there that says, oh, you got a new regulation that I have to do X? Well, I'm a nonconforming user because I don't have that. And it's gonna make me do it.
That's what we can, you know, come up with that, that outline that, that example, or what what we could use and bring it to us and then we can review it. And these questions can come up and we can tweak it just enough that it fits with what we got very well.
Yeah, and anyway, there's no real rush. We were, when we were talking about you folks seeing something on October sixteen.
This, we're getting into winter here, so.
Yeah, we're coming into winter. The likelihood of a bunch of food trucks wanting to start operating is just not now.
We get the, these regulations in place and and open up. You know, open our arms to food trucks, you know, as, as we're getting through winter, getting into spring. Trucks are ramping up again. They can see here's another opportunity in Lafayette that, you know, we could come out, give it a shot.
Yeah, another thing that's going on, and I'm not sure which city council meeting, the, uh, use of rights of way.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, outdoor seating for restaurants. Right now, there isn't anything that the city has that allows that. And there's a, I guess it's a resolution that's being prepared. I'm not sure when it'll go to the city council, but because city, well, I guess it's the Oregon Constitution or something, as well as the city charter. Uh, oh, and home role, that legal concept. Uh, it gives the authority to cities to maintain and control rights of way in the city limits. Other than things like ninety-nine, it's an ODOT facility. But, uh, there's a restaurant that inquired this summer about having outdoor seating. And the city didn't have a system or permit system to allow them to have some tables and chairs in the public right-of-way. And then you've got some things like the ADA standards where if you have stuff out on a sidewalk, you have to have at least four feet to let wheelchairs go through. And so here, uh, some, a lot of places, it's just the sidewalk. There's no extra paved area. Uh, for I, the building that I work at in Salem, on both, we're on a corner and on both corners from the wall of the building out to the curb, there's like fifteen feet of pavement. Uh, concrete. And so there's plenty of room for the restaurants on the first floor to have outdoor seating and not impede pedestrians. But here, that's unfortunately not quite the same situation. Sometimes it's a four or five-foot sidewalk. And that's it. Then there's the curb. So anyway, but, uh, there's something going to council sometime soon. And, uh, it would be a change to their municipal code. The part of the municipal code that regulates what can happen in rights of ways. And that then is just an over-the-counter permit kind of a thing. And it wouldn't be in the development code, so it wouldn't come through the planning commission for a public hearing. But that will be another thing that hopefully will be all squared away so that in January, when we get a couple of days at sixty-five degrees and people are overheating, they can have a chair and a table outside rather than inside a restaurant.
So they're not talking about taking the parking area? So, uh, by ninety-nine?
No.
That's, that's.
Yeah, I don't think ODOT would go for that. Yeah, ninety-nine, uh, and I don't know what the relationship is between ODOT with a road that runs through the middle of town. And the. and the local government, but if it's under the control of the county, and I'm not sure that there's any streets into, well, yeah, I guess Abbey Road or, you know, Abbey Road, when it's outside, it's a county facility, but once the annexation occurs, it takes in the right of way. And then development occurs, the right of way is approved and the city says, yes, county, we will take over responsibility for that section of right of way. And you'll still be responsible for the right of way outside the city limits. But uh certainly ninety-nine is an ODOT facility and so they probably don't care about somebody having a two-person table on a sidewalk on ninety-nine W coming through town. But as soon as you get to the curb, you know, the curb-to-curb width where parking and transportation and travel lanes are, I'm fairly certain they would not want anything going on out there. And because parking is so short, I don't think the city would want to turn parking spaces right in front of a business into something that's not parking. So.
Okay, so I guess for our purpose tonight, it sounds like Jim will gather together information from Kaiser and will use one of those Kaisers are. These Kaisers are, in the example of Kaisers, are starting framework of language of knowledge. And then bring that to us.
That that may never reading.
So you will. Exactly.
Is there anything else on October's agenda that we were gonna do?
Not from my knowledge, yeah, um let's see. Uh no, the driveway issue.
Uh, okay, yeah.
There's apparently somewhere, some way, an issue with a driveway or two. And so.
Parking vehicles on there and stuff, I was reading that.
Yeah, the development code doesn't say a lot about driveways. And so the public works design standards that control how things are built in a public right of way. So they apply to the public right of way. They don't apply to private property. But when it comes to a driveway apron, or some people call it a driveway drop, that's that kind of an angled part with the flared edges um that leads you up to a sidewalk typically, or sometimes it gets you a little bit, you know? And then there's the sidewalk and then there's another, the, on the planting strip before you get to the private property. But whatever it is, Public Works Design Standards set forth engineering standards for what is built in the right of way. And so whatever's going on, I don't know which properties or what driveways, but I guess there's some concerns about the code not saying what it could say. And I'm not sure how that ties in with the Public Works Design Standards. But there may be something that needs to be amended in the zone code that relates to a driveway width, for example, on private property. Because right now you have a curb cut with the driveway apron and it's a certain width, a maximum width. And then the driveway on the private property usually just goes straight onto the garage. And typically, uh you have a one or two garage, a one or two-door garage, but there's always a little bit of space beyond the garage door. And often people pave that wide so that when the cars sit there, they get in and out and they're on pavement. They're not on rocks or mud or grass or whatever. And so uh I assume that it might have something to do with the way houses are designed, usually at one end of the house is the garage. And then there's like a five-foot setback. And some people want to park an extra car or a trailer boat trailer or a camper-type trailer that pops up, one of those things in that five-foot area. And so for people that wanna do that, then they wanna pave it over to the property line and just have a much wider driveway. But then they come down to this maximum width or the curb cut in the driveway apron. And so they've gotta go in and then err to use that extra five feet.
Or they just pop up over the curb.
Well, yeah, there's that. And then some people say, yeah, you know, there's grass on the front lawn. Why do we have grass? I wanna put more parking out there. We got teenagers that, there's four cars in the family. Who just parked in front of the house and make it look like a, I don't know what.
And that's, that's under our purview is is to look at that.
Yeah, the private property is where the zone regulations basically apply. And in the public right of way are where the Public Works Design Standards apply.
So we have, we have that to address in October. I still think uh we can, we can bring this, you know, to discuss and make, you know, any tweaks or whatever to that. And uh then go from there.
Yeah. Okay, well, that sounds like a work session tonight would be concluded in what Jim just alluded to. It looks like that would be uh new business would be under the October.
Jim, is there, is there any update on the on doing traffic pattern study?
The Transportation System Plan.
Yes.
Uh last I was aware, let's see, this is getting to be the middle of September. Probably early August or maybe late July, Brandon got a copy of a draft. Scope of work or the contract or something.
Yeah, they said the scope of work, I believe.
Yeah, they had the city engineer reviewing it. And so I'm not sure where it is, but they're not, as far as I know, they're not yet to the point of identifying which traffic engineering firm or transportation planning firm will be the one that does the work here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, in terms of the agenda, I'm not sure if that, I guess that would have been old business.
That would have been old business, but there's no business. So just look at the new business, old business that we're talking about is category, or we can call it. Sam or Scott, you've had your commissioner comment, so. Okay, we'll open it up for the commissioner comments.
I'm done. Um I, there is, so, and this kinda goes back to the last couple of months where we have not had a meeting. Um and, you know, my thoughts and Scott and I talked about it just a little bit, but um if if the same planner, Jim does not have anything, should that mean that we just don't meet? Because that might give us an opportunity. Uh because I, what I see is that our meetings are usually driven by uh what Jim has come up with and everything. And maybe a meeting without him gives us an opportunity to talk amongst ourselves. You know, about things we're thinking of with the city as far as planning. You know, it doesn't have to be, you know, any particular agenda, but a chance, you know, have a work session, just talk amongst.
It's worse.
It would be open, it would be open to.
A work session amongst ourselves, an open meeting amongst ourselves. Do we not necessarily have, would not have a predefined agenda?
Yeah, yeah, it'd be.
We only get twelve meetings a year, so.
Yes, yeah.
And we, we've all committed to those twelve meetings.
And it doesn't have to be the full two hours. It can be, it'll be here an hour. And if somebody, one of us has thoughts or we've heard feedback from the community or something like that.
I I am certainly amiable to something like that. That's not, that is not a bad use of our time by any means, so. That's. Jim and us. So I see, I suppose the the, you know, just.
Be aware that uh and you're right, generally what comes here is development generated or if there's new laws and things that cause the development code or the comp plan to have to be amended, then okay, that comes through me and here we gotta have a meeting and take care of whatever. But uh if I'm not here, that's fine. Brandon would be here, I assume. And Nicole would be here and is there somebody back there running the Zoom system or anything? Okay, so there would be two staff people here anyway.
Yeah, that way we'd be a little bit proactive and and uh, you know, possibly bring up thoughts um that that would.
Or or that could, yeah, or it could be just a conversation about, hey, you know, like Jim was saying, there may be some change or something. We see something and put, hey, observe X.
Yeah.
Maybe there's something to discuss about. Maybe there's something there. Maybe it ends up tying into something, or maybe it's just a discussion and.
And it could give us that little extra time to, you know, to brainstorm back and forth.
Okay.
We're, we're down to.
We are, yeah.
Counselors.
Well, um she hasn't been just one technically.
Yeah, one.
One open spot. But Sheila, Sheila.
Sheila Newman.
She was.
Oh, she's excused.
And sometimes at this time of the year, people are gone a lot anyhow. But we're starting to head into fall. Okay, so it sounds like, yes, we'll definitely have an October or September meeting. We have a, the uh November meeting, we'll figure out what the date of that is and that's getting around with pushing towards Thanksgiving. December will be pushing, and December is not gonna be pushing up against Christmas, but yeah, you're just, you're in the holiday season, so uh that doesn't mean we have to be here by any means.
This year, Thanksgiving's the last week of November twenty-seven, and the third Thursday is the preceding Thanksgiving. And then uh December twenty-four is the fourth Wednesday. Um so the fourth Thursday is the twenty-fifth, but you would be meeting the third Thursday on the eighteenth.
Could be fine there.
Yes, unless something comes up, I know years past this has been used for uh storing toys, but they now have a, their own building with plenty of conference room space, so I would guess that if they're gonna do something like that, this conference room would be open and their facilities would be adequate for bedrooms. Okay.
Does anybody have anything to bring up tonight? Or are you bringing up something next month or November or December? Is there a preview that you could provide as to what's on your mind?
Don, you have this funny look on your face like you're.
I didn't give us anything.
Oh, okay.
I might be uh looking for a food pot.
I might be waiting for it. Then you just have food pot. I'm gonna show you, there's no conflict, adventure, just all that wonderful stuff. Okay. So next meeting is going to be October since team.
Yeah, before that, well, on the agenda, can I interrupt?
Yes, by all means.
Back to new business.
Back to new business.
Um what was it? Boy, it's getting to be so long ago. Uh the first week of October was the deadline when the city submitted a grant request to DLCD to get money from the state, from DLCD to update our housing needs analysis and buildable land inventory. And mainly, they have money from the legislature to grant funds to local governments, but because big cities and medium cities have to update theirs by law with all these housing reg- uh bills that have been passed. There's uh by the end of this year, the Land Conservation and Development Commission will adopt new rules as to how to do housing needs analysis. There'll be a few new things in how to do buildable land inventories. But probably most of the money will go to the medium and big cities that are required by law now to do that. But DLCD did say that smaller cities that are less than ten thousand could apply and they never know. And so we applied here for Lafayette. We talked about how uh ten years ago, essentially, we expanded the boundary by seventy acres. And now forty of those acres or sixty of those acres have been used up in the Meadowbrook subdivision. Not that all of those acres were built because a lot of them are steep slopes in the creek bottom. But all that, sixty of the seventy-two acres are now developed. And almost every one of those lots has a house on it. So uh we said that, you know, as the city has grown over the years, every subdivision that's gone in has had every lot built on it. It's just not one of those things where the subdividers have had people coming around and saying, oh, yeah, I don't like that lot. And then five years later, that lot is still for sale. Nobody's liking it. What's the problem? It's the opposite. Every single lot gets built pretty quickly. And so uh hopefully due to our growth rate, which we did tell them how much it's been from ninety to two thousand, doubled in population. Two thousand to two thousand and ten during the recession, it increased something like forty-five percent. Two thousand and ten to twenty, we still have growth. And even now, after twenty twenty, we, you know, had Meadowbrook to give us a bunch of new housing. So given that we're a small city and growing that fast, they might say, oh, yeah, let's give a few bucks to Lafayette to have the housing needs analysis and buildable land inventory updated so that the city will know exactly how many acres of buildable land they have and what the housing mix is. Kind of obvious, ninety-eight percent single-family detached. But uh at least we can say in the housing needs analysis that we've had uh I don't know, three duplexes or something built. And we've had three or now four, I think the fourth uh townhouse is under construction. And so we can say, yep, we're allowing all these things. It's just that the market enterprise, not the single-family story here, not a multi-family story. So anyway, uh that could be something to give you an update about in October or November.
Okay.
They said that they were going to let everybody know the first week of October. It was the first week in September who got the grant money, but just, I think it was yesterday, Wednesday or Tuesday on the news at the state level. The governor has put a halt on all kinds of stuff, all sorts of spending.
Yep.
Uh their estimate or forecast or what revenue is coming in and what other monies, like federal monies are coming in. And with all the cuts uh to federal funding, the state is short, I don't know, several hundred million dollars. So as soon as I heard that, I thought, oh my gosh, is that maybe why in the first true week of September, we didn't find out if we got the grant or not? Because as they're gonna do things like that, they know a few weeks ahead of time that by some day, like middle of September, they will announce that there's financial problems in Oregon and pretty much every other state in the country. So the uppers, the upper electeds in the state easily could have known at the beginning of September that things were looking bad and that they were gonna announce a couple of weeks later that things are bad. And they could have even then unofficially told all the different departments, have any money to be handed out to hold.
Yeah.
Don't release it yet. Don't announce it yet.
What what would the, what would the study cost? What was the, was our, our?
The amount of money? Oh, let's see, there have been enough grant requests, not just for here, but for our other cities that we provide planning services to. Yeah, it seems it's always like fifteen or twenty thousand. But you need those two housing needs analysis and the information in it and the buildable land inventory with this information to go forward with the uh urban growth boundary expansion.
Is it an independent company that you hire to do those, those studies or is it something we do it as?
Well, I did both of those documents for the ten-year-ago UGB expansion. And this time it's like I could have done that, but at the cog with the other cities that we're applying for. At the cog with the other cities that we're applying for. If the other cities. All got money. Then some of those, we said, we, the cog staff, will do the work. For Lafayette, we, when we requested to. Did turn in the grant application, we said, cog staff won't do the work. We'll have a private sector consultant do it. So out of the numerous private sector planning consultants. Some have done H. Housing needs analyses and buildable land inventories and some haven't. So there shouldn't be a problem and. Because there's going to be a new administrative rule adopted by LCDC in December that changes the rules on. What you have to do for a housing needs analysis, VLI. We and our grant said, yeah, we'll wait. We don't need to start this now in the fall or early winter, we'll wait until twenty twenty-six. When the new rule is out and available to everybody.
Is the most current.
So the grants, if any, were actually released yet, that work could happen now before the end of the year. And then. Other grants that might be. Issued, awarded. Would come into play in terms of a workload in twenty twenty-six. So.
Cool, okay.
Uh.
Okay, now. I'll move on to the forty percent. That meeting is going to be October sixteenth. But the location is going to be over in the community center, and that's because the council will be. Meeting here simultaneously.
They push here.
The council.
The council meeting, same, yes. Well, my gosh.
It will be a simultaneous meeting.
So they kick us.
Need to bring our pitch for test.
Lock the door.
Over to.
Just so long as you get to take the hammer with you over there.
Hmm, uh.
I totally.
Sam, Sam ever needed to use, I can leave it for the mayor. We're not a rowdy bunch. People are here is great, so, you know.
Maybe in the packet or the agenda, there can be some. Rosible reminder.
Do not.
Go to the common, don't come to city hall often.
Yeah.
I make a note to, to attend the meeting.
I second.
Nicole, roll hood.
Commission Chair, aye. Commission Vice Chair, Bill.
Aye.
Commissioner Miola.
Aye.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Adamson.
Aye.
And then Scott and Ron, you have your chair meeting tomorrow.
Yes.
With, um, Brandon and Hillary, I believe.
Share me, what time?
It's thirty.
I forgot about it. Okay. Thirty tomorrow evening.